All right, Luke, I think we are good to go. I think our people populating yet? People coming in? I wanted to hold off until I start seeing, okay, yes, here we go. We start seeing people coming in here. Wonderful. All right.
All right, we're live.
We're live. Excellent. Well, I call this the meeting of the City Council of Atascadero to order, and Councilmember Funk, would you please lead us in a pledge to the flag?
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borbo.
Here.
Councilmember Darris.
Here.
Councilmember Funk.
Here.
Mayor Protem Newsom.
Here.
Mayor Moreno.
I'm here.
All present. Thank you. Well, if you are watching or listening to the City Council meeting tonight, welcome. We had just a little bit of technical challenge, so we are getting going a few minutes late. You have not missed anything. We are starting now. If you would like to speak during the time set aside for community forum or during public comment for one of the items on the agenda, if you're on the webinar, you have the opportunity to do that by raising your hand, and I'll let you know when that time comes. And if you happen to be watching on Charter Channel 20 or possibly listening on KPRL, know that you can call into the phone number 805-538-2888 to provide public comment via phone. When you do call, please let us know which item it is that you would like to speak on. Once again, that number tonight for public comment is 805-538-2888. May I have a motion to accrue the agenda?
I solemnly.
A motion by Councilmember Funk, a second by Mayor Protem Newsom, and we will waive the reading and full of all ordinance as appearing on this agenda, and the titles of the word will be read aloud for our first reading after the motion before the council vote. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk? Yes. Councilmember Darris?
Yes.
Councilmember Borbo? Councilmember Borbo, sorry.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am. Laura, I will let you know, your audio is not stellar. Yeah, there's kind of some feedback in there, and it's a little awkward, but we'll move forward. So we are on to presentations where I want to turn this over to our city manager, Rochelle Rickard, for our oath of office for Police Chief Masterson.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm actually going to start. We have a brand-new police chief, Chief Robert or Bob Masterson. He started on Monday, and we are very excited to have him here, starting at the city of Atascadero. Typically, we would have a great big swearing-in and badge-pinning ceremony and invite, you know, police chiefs from across the county and others to come, welcome him here to Atascadero and introduce himself. Here in the age of COVID, we have to do things a little bit differently. So we did video and his swearing-in, and Luke, if you could play that right now, that would be helpful. Luke, are you able to help with that volume at all?
Help with that volume at all? Help with that volume at all? Help with that volume at all?
Give me one second.
Help with that volume at all?
Give me one second.
Help with that volume at all?
So Rochelle, I'm wondering if maybe we need to deliver a live oath of office.
Let me, let's give that another shot. I apologize.
Nobody say a word.
Yeah. We do love technology, I have to admit. All right, we're gonna give that one another shot. All right. We're gonna try this a third time.
I think if we're having too much challenge with this, maybe we want to deliver a live oath, like we did in November, it might be quicker.
Yes, we can work with that. I'll have Luke work on that while I tell you a little bit about Chief Masterson. As I said, we're very happy to introduce and ask you to join us in welcoming the city of Atascadero's new police chief, Robert, he also goes by Bob Masterson. Chief Masterson was the most recently serving to the north of us a bit, as the police chief in King City, but luckily, we've successfully lured him away. He began his appointment here in Atascadero last Monday, so he's been here for over a week now. Chief Masterson was born in Florida into a military family that moved to California in the late '70s for his father's final military posting. Bob was raised mostly in the rural town of Avonale, where his father worked as a deputy sheriff for Kings County, and he started his law enforcement career with the Tulare County Sheriff's Department in 1986, working all aspects of the department, including detentions, courts, patrol, detectives, SWAT, and search and rescue. He took an early retirement from full-time law enforcement in 2007 to pursue the chance to be the director of a Christian nonprofit organization to help at-risk youth and gang prevention in the Visalia area. In 2008, Chief Masterson transitioned back to law enforcement as the chief of police of the College of Sequoia's District Police, and then accepted a position with the King City Police Department in 2018 to help guide that department away from its troubled past. Chief Masterson successfully led the King City Police Department in a direction that brought about a great reduction in the number of violent crimes in the city, along with an increase in community outreach. His efforts resulted in the city receiving the League of California Cities Helen Putnam Award for Public Safety in 2019, and the Police Department being commended in 2020 for violent crime reduction by both the California State Legislature and King City's U.S. Congressman. As a matter of fact, Chief Masterson will have to step away here in a short while from tonight's council meeting in order to receive another congressional commendation tonight in King City, and to finish up a little bit of King City business there. Although he has been working in King City, Bob has been a very active in Atascadero for some time now. He lives in Paso Robles with his wife of 15 years, Leanne, and their two children, Cohen and Kinsley, who I think I see there in the picture. So overall, we're very excited to have him join our executive management team here at the city and are confident that Chief Masterson's compassionate and professional style of policing will fit in very well here in Atascadero. So let me ask Bob if you would like to say a few words, and then we'll try and introduce the videos, and one more time. Oops, you're on mute, Bob.
Thank you very much. It's a little challenge tonight, juggling two meetings, but hopefully this will be my last one. It is a pleasure to be in Atascadero. My wife and I are looking forward to just getting to know everybody there a little bit better. We have many friends there already, but we have a lot of people to get to meet, and we're looking forward to just getting to know the community better. I'd like to thank the city manager and the council for choosing me to be your new chief. I will not let you down, and I will serve you proudly, as I will the citizens of Atascadero. So thank you very much.
Welcome. We're very glad to have you, chief, and I see more awards all over the place. Wow. We're, yeah, very glad to have you here, and I think our whole community was excited when they're like, okay, he's starting. So really nice to have that stability back. And again, thank Lieutenant Mullay and the whole department for really keeping things going. Not that we're surprised by that, but that was a big task for them to take on, not having a chief for a couple of months. And so we're, thank them, and really glad to have you here. Luke, do you think you have the oath of office going now?
I am hoping so. Can you all see the video queued up right now? All right, let's give it a shot. No audio? All right.
Very low. Can you turn it up? Chief Masterson, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Robert Masterson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all and.
For. Or domestic.
That I will bear truthfully.
That I will bear truthfully.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
For purpose of evasion.
For purpose of evasion.
And that I.
All right. Was that audible? Did you guys hear anything? I was silent on my end for some reason. Did I?
Thank you, Luke. I think I finished a little after yours.
Heather, you're muted.
And can anybody hear me?
All right, my microphone. I can hear you. Now you should be able to hear me. All right, so we are off to a roaring start with our technology. Yeah, Luke, I can hear it. It was, I mean, it was muffled, but I think we got the hang of it, so we will accept that into the record. And now Chief Masterson has a commendation for one of our officers.
Wait, before we do that, Mayor, if we could just quickly show his badge-pinning, that's a very important ceremony for all of our officers. And Bob, if you can introduce here those that are going to do the badge-pinning. Oh, he might be participating in King City. We'll just go ahead and watch the badge.
I can, Rochelle.
Okay.
Present during my badge-pinning were my wife, Leanne, and my two children, our two children, Cohen and Kinsley, and Cohen and Kinsley participated in the badge-pinning itself.
Wonderful. Thank you. Go ahead, Luke.
Hi, this is my wife, Leanne, my son, Cohen, and my daughter, Kinsley. And I've elected to have my son and my daughter pin my badge on tonight. Kinsley? You want to give that to your brother? Got it? Thanks, guys. Give me a kiss. Okay. I have one hug for you.
Very sweet. And wow, he did that without sticking, poking you. Good job.
It was like you got that thing on there perfect, too. I'm impressed.
Straight.
Yes. Nice. Thank you so much. Rochelle, was there anything further?
No, I just want to encourage anybody to go ahead and reach out to Bob. He's available by email, phone calls. I know he's anxious to start meeting a lot of us here in the community, and is very receptive to people reaching out to him. So welcome aboard, Bob. Chief, thank you.
And Chief, I will turn it over to you. Are you able to do the commendation right now? Okay, in one minute. How about, would it be best if I wait that one minute, or do we move on to the consent calendar? Like, are you going to be done quickly, or I'm not sure exactly how we're looking here?
Yeah, I'm hoping to be done quickly.
Okay.
Four or five minutes.
Okay, wonderful. So why don't we go ahead and then move on to the consent calendar, and we will come back to the presentation, to the commendation. So the consent calendar consists of items that are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff, and they can be approved in one motion if there is no member of the council or the public that wishes to pull an item and ask questions or a comment. If a comment or a discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered in the listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council concerning the item before any action is taken. So I will first ask council, are there any council members wishing to pull an item from the consent calendar?
I just do have a question. I wasn't present for most of these meetings, so should I abstain from any vote to approve?
I believe that because you are able to, you have the minutes and you can see the meetings, you know, you actually have the ability to do that, that you could vote on it. But Laura, I will ask you, he could probably go either way on that.
Yeah, he does not need to abstain. As long as he's read through the minutes, we're good.
Okay.
And with that, I am looking to our attendees, and I see that there is, Lieutenant Mullay has his hand up. Was this for a consent calendar item? And it is gone. That was probably an error. Okay, so it looks like we are good on the consent calendar. So no members of council, no members of the public, and I will go ahead and ask if I've got a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Borbo, and a second by Councilmember Funk. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borbo.
Yes.
Councilmember Funk.
Yes.
Councilmember Darris.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And now, let's go ahead and move on to updates from the city manager, this Rickard. And Rochelle, you are muted, in case you didn't know.
There we go. Can you all see the PowerPoint? Yes.
Yes, it's not in show mode, but we can see it.
Okay. There we go. Someday, we will get this. So the first thing I want to talk to you about are the Emergency Assistant Micro Grants Awards, and I want to bring you some good news. The checks were mailed out last Friday for the city's Emergency Assistant Grant Awards. 100 Atascadero businesses applied for the $250,000 that was made available by the city in December for this grant funding. We received all of those applications on January 4, and we're able to get the checks out by January 9. We have now awarded grants to 63 local businesses in amounts ranging from $1,275 to $4,250. The grant was targeted towards those businesses that were shut down by the governor's December 6 stay-at-home order, including all onsite dining, personal services such as barbers, hairdresses, nail salons, fitness centers, dance studios, family entertainments, and related uses. That shutdown has been devastating to those businesses. We are very grateful also for the chamber's recent fundraising efforts, which enabled us to send checks out to even more businesses. They raised over $5,000 that we were able to add to our $250,000 in order to make those grants to those 63 businesses. While we were able to provide a small amount of relief to those 63 businesses, there are many, many more businesses that have been devastated by COVID. Please remember that all of our local businesses need everyone to support them right now. Shop at a local retailer, or pick up from some beer from one of our local breweries, order takeout from your favorite restaurant, or find some other way to support your favorite local business today in a COVID-safe manner to help ensure that they remain open here in Atascadero after we get through this. Want to talk a little bit about the D-20 public meeting. So tonight, council meeting is our kickoff event. Tonight, we'll be discussing the format of the total nine study sessions that will be coming up, starting on Thursday. The study sessions, sorry, are willing to be, are going to be mini-goal-setting strategic planning sessions designed to inform the council's February 19 and 20 priority-setting planning session. That meeting in February is where the council will set the big priorities for the expenditure of the 1% sales tax measure D-20, along with other city funds. But these study sessions are designed to receive input for those and to inform that. We want to make sure that we have the time to have meaningful discussions with members of the public, and want to give lots of opportunities for that. At the nine study sessions, there will be breakout groups with the public brainstorming on key topics like what would make Atascadero better. Each group will be asked the same questions, but we'll be able to do it in smaller bits, so it's not as intimidating. We want to make this as helpful as possible. The complete listing of meeting dates and times, along with the information link, in order to connect to the meetings, can be found posted on the city's website, social media pages, and others. If anybody's confused, please email me at rrickard, and I can get them a link for them to join. And last but not least, January is Restaurant Month. January is always Restaurant Month, and this year is no different, even with COVID. More than ever, we need to have our Restaurant Month. So through January 31, Atascadero's participating restaurants will offer special fixed-price three-course menus or other special deals. We have a number of Atascadero restaurants participating, including Guest House Grill, Ladonna, Central Coast Distillery, and Jamba. And in addition, our local restaurants are open and offer a variety of curbside delivery and takeout options. More information can be found at atascadero.com. Sorry, visit atascadero.com. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Seeing none, we'll bring that back. And Ms. Rickard, will you be doing the Department of Justice crime reporting requirements, the update, or will that be Chief Masterson?
That will actually be Lieutenant Mullay. He is going to join us tonight, and tell us a little bit about that.
Fabulous. Why don't we, well, let's go ahead with that. As long as Chief, as long as we have him to do that commendation, if he needs to head back out again, and he has a window of time, I want to make sure that we're not losing that window for him. Chief, are you good if we come to you in a couple of minutes, or do you need to do your commendation now?
Yes, sorry, I'm just getting on with the car.
Okay, so we'll move forward with Lieutenant Mullay.
Our video. Good morning, Mayor and Council. My report is on the FBI's new mandates. The FBI has mandated all law enforcement agencies in the United States switch from the Uniform Crime Reporting System, or UCRs, to the National Incident-Based Reporting System, or NIBRs, by 2021. As of January 1, all agencies are required to report NIBR statistics to the Department of Justice in California, who then reports them to the FBI. UCR summary crime reporting method is no longer accepted by the FBI as of 2021. NIBRs is a national program which governs the way crime report information is collected and submitted to the FBI. It does not govern how we conduct criminal investigations or what we charge someone with when they are arrested. NIBRs has specific reporting standards that all agencies must follow. This enables the ability to correctly measure crime across the country. As such, it maintains its own definitions of crime offenses regardless of state statutes. The NIBRs method of crime reporting allows up to 10 crimes to be counted per incident for a bank of 52 crime categories deemed significant by the FBI. The outdated UCR system only allowed for the most significant crime to be counted and only used a bank of 10 categories. An example, fraud, which is one of the most fiscally-impact crimes, was not counted in one of the 10 UCR crime categories. An example is a residential burglary takes place, and the suspect steals the family car. The suspect then uses that vehicle to commit a robbery at a nearby convenience store. A minimum of three significant crimes have occurred in this scenario, the burglary, car theft, and robbery. Under the former UCR reporting method, only the crime deemed most significant by the hierarchy would be counted in our crime stats. Now, in this case, we would report the robbery, the burglary, and the car theft. In addition to providing more accurate count for crime statistics, the NIBRs method will also provide more detailed information. Distinctions can now be made between the attempted and completed crimes, and will allow the tracking of drugs, alcohol, and technology, along with weapon involvement in our crime statistics. Each agency in California must be certified under the new NIBRs requirements, and the certification must take place over the course of '21. However, it will not be done simultaneously. This will likely cause the perception that crime in Atascadero has increased, when in reality, it is just being counted differently. We'll also make comparing 2021 statistics to our preceding years unreliable to establish trends or provide any data as the reporting requirements have changed. Some of the added workload with the new systems are, officers will now be required to take separate reports for all incidents in which time and/or space separation has occurred. An example, a theft occurs from the vehicle during the nighttime hours. A stolen credit card is then used at Walgreens in Atascadero for a fraudulent purpose. The thief then uses the same credit card across the street at 7-Eleven. In the past, under the UCR reporting method, all three incidents could be reported under the same case number the same case number as they were all directly related. NIRs method requires that each of the three incidents be reported in a separate police report, as each crime did not occur at the same time and place. The reporting officer will have to do the triple the amount of work for the same incident. They're also required now to use separate case numbers for local warrants, out-of-city warrants, and fresh charges. For an example, if an officer contacts a subject in possession of drugs, the suspect has an outstanding narcotics warrant from a previous arrest in Atascadero and a warrant from a previous arrest in Paso Robles. The officer has to address the warrants and the new charges for possession with three new case numbers, tripling the workload. In closing, the benefits to the consistency in reporting across the nation are clear, and the impact to APD personnel will be significant with little reward. I've discussed the impact, the increase on our patrol staff. However, the new system will have a significant impact on our records unit, which consists of one full-time position and two part-time positions.
Normally, I like to thank people for their reports, Lieutenant, but in this case, I'm not sure he can do that. Thank you. I guess it allows for a certain clarity of things, but in the end, it doesn't seem like it's providing a lot. Any idea why this is coming forward? Is there like some greater purpose that there's actually a benefit to it that we're just not seeing, or?
The benefit is it's actually accurate. The UCR was established back in the 20s with the FBI, and it didn't capture all the information that we have now with automation. And so now we can click different boxes and categories, which will allow us to search times and areas and such. And again, it accurately reflects the crime in Atascadero, as opposed to the old one, was just the hierarchy. So more accuracy, but it will definitely come at a cost.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Very, very good report.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see. I will ask now if we have, is Chief Masterson, if you want to pop on and let me know if you're good to go, otherwise we'll head to community forum.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm bouncing back for a minute, so go ahead, sorry.
You're fine. Are you, are you ready to do your, the commendation?
Yeah, the council's talking now, so.
You've got an hour.
Well, that's why I figured I'd bounce back while they're talking.
Okay. Well, then I will let you move forward.
Hi, this is for Officer Martinow's commendation. Yeah, it's a privilege to come back and be chief so early in a department where I get to read such a great commendation for an officer. And I'll summarize it for you, because there is a video. I'm not quite sure if it's working yet, but Officer Martinow proposed that we carry tourniquets on our duty belts to save lives for officers and citizens if the need arose. I'll be there in a minute, okay? Sorry, guys. So about a year after he proposed that and we implemented it at Atascadero Police Department, he responded to an officer-involved shooting up in the Templeton area. I'm sure you all saw on the news in which a deputy was shot in the leg. Officer Martinow singularly tracked down the shot deputy and applied the tourniquet that he implemented in our city, which no doubt, at the very least, reduced a great amount of blood flow and a severe injury to his leg, and in all likelihood, probably saved his life. So for that, we really felt that it was deserving of Officer Martinow to receive the chief's commendation and show the citizens of Atascadero and the council what a great staff member he is. So Officer Martinow, again, congratulations.
Congratulations, Officer. Thank you, Chief. And it sounded like there's potentially a video, so I would ask maybe our city manager, do you know, is there a video that we'll be able to watch?
There should be. Luke, could you please cue that up and we'll give it a shot?
I think that's right.
Right.
Is it over here? Where is it?
I'll share it on the screen, okay?
Luke, we're unable to see the screen.
Hi, my name is Bob Masterson. I am honored to be the chief of police of Atascadero Police Department. And with me today is Officer Craig Martinow. And Officer Martinow, about a year ago, proposed that we carry tourniquets on our duty belts for lifesaving techniques of officers in the public. And in the course of Officer Martinow's duties, he responded to a shooting on September 25th, 2020, in which a San Luis Obispo County deputy was shot outside of Paso Robles and Templeton. And Officer Martinow responded, singularly tracked down the wounded deputy, applied his tourniquet that he proposed we carry, which ultimately resulted in a greatly amount of diminished blood loss to the deputy, which in all reality probably helped to, at the very least, save his leg, if not his life. And for that, Officer Martinow is getting his chief's commendation today. And his wife Savannah is going to pin his commendation on him. So Savannah, if you'd like to come up? And this is your commendation. Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
With officers like this in Atascadero Police Department, I think Atascadero is very well-served. To have the forethought to think of a lifesaving tourniquet on a belt, and then to have the knowledge and forethought to track down a deputy shows exceptional, exceptional police work. Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Wonderful. Congratulations, Officer Martinow. Thank you for your ingenuity and your fast action in most likely saving a life. We really, really appreciate that, and I'm sure that we will see the benefits of that magnified as the, as the years go on. So congratulations. Would you like to say anything?
I just appreciate having a department that allows us to be thinkers like that and propose and implement techniques and equipment that we can use in the field and that work for a department that listens to us and gives us exactly what we need to successfully do our jobs and gives us the proper training, so I can, you know, go on and apply that also. You know, part of my training with, had the opportunity to work with SED, so part of that training is, you find a job and you fill a role that's not being filled yet. So the totality of my trainings through the department and all the partnerships we have in the county, it's what equals the success. It's not one individual, it's the group effort.
Well said. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations again. All right, we will now move on to our community forum. This is the portion of the meeting that is reserved for persons who are wishing to address the council on any matter that is not on the agenda this evening and over which the council has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and we have a timer going that will assist you in knowing when your time is up. We will allow a maximum of 30 minutes for a community forum. And let's see, please do state your name for the record, although most of you I can see, so I will introduce you, so you can raise your hand and we will bring you on. So with that, community forum is now open, and I see a Mike, Mike Cusson? Welcome. You might be muted, because we're not hearing you.
Now I'm unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, sir.
Good, thank you. Mayor and council members, I'm Mike Cusson, and I'm the district coordinator for San Luis Obispo County's AARP Tax Aid, the national program that's a joint venture between the AARP Foundation and the IRS. I want to let you and your constituents know that the AARP Tax Aid will be preparing tax returns for free again this year, but we've had to make some changes. Unfortunately, due to COVID restrictions, we can't do in-person preparation at our Atascadero site, St. Williams Parish, but the parish will allow taxpayers to drop off their tax information. We are determining what days and times we'll be accepting those documents at St. Williams, as well, as well as whether appointments will be needed. Please check our webpage, ccfreetax.org for updated information. Taxpayers can also go to the Paso Robles Senior Center at 240 Scott Street to drop off their tax information, Monday through Friday, from 9:00 to 12:00, beginning February 1st. No appointments are required at Paso. Our certified preparers will prepare the tax returns in their homes and return them to the drop-off site within seven to 14 days. They will call the taxpayer when the return is ready for pickup. For the protection of the taxpayers and our volunteers, we require the taxpayers remain in their cars with their mask on to fill out the forms and ask any questions they have. For more information, please go to our website, ccfreetax.org. You just Google Central Coast Free Tax, or Google AARP Free Tax San Luis Obispo, or go to our Facebook page at AARP Tax Aid San Luis Obispo. We don't have a North County phone number to call, but we'll be able to answer your taxpayer questions when you drive up with your tax documents. We'll be trying our best to serve all taxpayers in the North County with the AARP Tax Aid Free Tax Service, as we've done in past years. To recap, please bring all your tax documents to the drop-off site, either the Paso Robles Senior Center at 240 Scott Street, Monday through Friday, from 9:00 to 12:00, starting February 1st, or to St. Williams, where the times will be determined. Please make sure you have all your documents. I want to thank you, the council, and the city of Atascadero for allowing me this time, and I want to thank KPRL for allowing me to put it out to all your constituents. Thank you very much, Mayor Moreno.
Thank you, Ms. Cusson. And Luke, I would ask that we get the time, there we go. Thank you, you read my mind. We will move on to our next caller. I see Marty Brown. And we can't hear you yet.
Okay, now can you?
Yes, Ms. Brown, you're perfectly heard.
Good evening. My name is Marty Brown. I've been a homeowner as well as a business owner in Atascadero since 1972. My business was energy, Atascadero Battery Exchange. We sold all types of batteries, automotive, industrial, and storage batteries for solar and wind energy for houses and businesses off the grid. A big part of our overhead was electricity. If there had been an opportunity to lower the cost, utilize clean renewable energy sources at competitive prices with incentives and rebates, we would have been more than ready to sign on. Central Coast Community Energy, 3CE, already serves over 296,000 Central Coast customers. If we want to attract new businesses here, we will be at a disadvantage if we don't lower our electricity rates. Every other city in San Luis Obispo County has signed on. Since 3CE is community-based, our city would have a seat on its policy board. 3CE has a strong financial position, an A credit rating, and has already invested $1.1 billion in long-term renewable energy contracts with more in line, increasing reliability of renewable resources in California. This issue has not been added to the agenda, nor a study requested of staff after 3CE representatives came here in 2019, giving an informative presentation. Other cities have thoroughly investigated 3CE and community choice aggregation around the state and have enthusiastically signed on, including our sister city Paso Robles. We could have shared a seat on the 3CE policy board with them. The city owes it to its residents and businesses to consider money-saving opportunity and give us a seat at the decision-making table. Our city could save big. Our wastewater treatment plant spent $60,000 annually on power, Charles Paddock Zoo, Echo Homeless Center, small family-owned businesses, and tourism, hotels, and other attractions that bring people to our city. Just a few examples. I want to repeat that if we want to attract businesses here, we will be at a competitive disadvantage if we don't lower our electricity rates. There's plenty of time to make an informed decision. Check with other elected officials in cities who have had and who will experience, have experience with community choice programs, including 3CE. Please give us the option and take action to help our community. Thank you. And also, welcome to Chief Masterson.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. We will move on to Lee Perkins.
Hi, good evening, City Council, and Happy New Year. I too am revisiting the Central Coast Community Energy option. As Marty said, it's been about a year since the presenter from Central Coast Community Energy came and spoke to the city council and asked to have the item agendized. Since then, Paso Robles has voted unanimously and has started with the program November 20th, 2020. It's an opportunity to lower costs plus utilize clean renewable energy sources at competitive prices, and it offers incentives and rebates. It looks like it could be a good plan for the city, but as you, as we all know, the city needs to agendize it to ask their staff to do a study, and there's many resources since a year ago to take a look at, to see how feasible and beneficial it could be for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. I now see Rachel Bolee.
Hi, this is Rochelle. Can you guys hear me?
And I know your name's Rochelle. I don't know why I said Rachel. Hi, Rochelle, yes.
No, you're fine. I still respond, always. Hi, my name is Rochelle Bolee. I am the coordinator for our county's Local Childcare Planning Council, and coming to you today on behalf of the We Are the Care Initiative, which I know you guys have heard about multiple times. Looking forward, as we begin 2021, we're starting a new chapter for the initiative and looking forward to the reinvigoration of our work. This new stage has been inspired by the tenacity of our childcare professionals and the childcare field in our community in the face of COVID. This pandemic has affected the childcare centers and family childcare homes detrimentally, but our childcare professionals continue to persevere and put the children and families of San Luis Obispo County first. 13% of our programs are currently inactive or providing distance learning for counties or for families throughout the county, as well as a recent survey that has shown that we're only operating at about 76% of our licensed capacity, which is a result of limited group sizes and under attendance, again, due to the pandemic. But programs in our community have been forced to drastically adjust their way of operating, utilizing funds from razor-thin budgets to purchase more cleaning products and even introduce more stringent sanitation guidelines, all while staff are putting themselves and their families at risk every single day. These programs are also a large part of our small business community, and they're often not recognized in the same light as some of our small retailers, restaurants, or other small local businesses. Childcare is absolutely an essential service and in need of our support. We Are the Care is excited to announce multiple opportunities for you to help and get involved. Right now, we are hosting a childcare supply drive through January 27th. That's in partnership with the Economic Vitality Corporation, EVC, and we are accepting donations at all Ceslock Brands locations, where we're asking people to consider contributing gloves, disinfectant wipes, et cetera, so that they can help support our local childcare providers. We also are hosting a We Are the Care Kickoff Town Hall event on January 21st from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., and we invite you guys to come and take a look and see what we've been working on and how we're moving forward to support the early care and education field throughout this county now more than ever through this pandemic, as we hope to be able to support our county and our children. So we will send forward more information, but thank you for this opportunity, and thank you all for all of the amazing work that you're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Bolee. And I see Josh Cross.
Good evening, council members. Can you hear me?
We can.
Good evening, once again. My name is Josh Cross. I'm the interim CEO of the Atascadero Chamber of Commerce. And first off, welcome, Chief Masterson. It is great. It is great to have you joining our community. Tonight, I'm here to discuss a business relief program. Recently, the U.S. Department of Treasury announced that the Paycheck Protection Program reopened this week for new borrowers and certain existing PPP borrowers to promote access to capital. Initially, only community financial institutions will be able to make first draw PPP loans starting yesterday and second draw PPP loans starting tomorrow. The PPP will open to all participating lenders shortly thereafter. This round of the PPP continues to prioritize millions of Americans employed by small businesses, such as those in Atascadero, by authorizing up to $284 billion towards job retention and certain other expenses through March 31, 2021, and by allowing certain existing PPP borrowers to apply for a second draw loan. Some key updates include that PPP borrowers can set their loans' covered period to be any length between eight and twenty-four weeks to best meet their business needs. PPP loans will cover additional expenses, including operations expenditures, property damage costs, supplier costs, and worker protection expenditures, and the program is eligible to, as it's been expanded to include 501(c)(6) nonprofit organizations, housing cooperatives, direct marketing organizations, among other types of organizations. The PPP provides greater flexibility for seasonal employees, and certain existing PPP borrowers can request to modify their first draw PPP loan amount. And certainly, other folks are eligible to apply for a second draw PPP. Those that are eligible are previous, who are those that have previously received a first draw PPP loan and will or has used the full amount, has no more than 300 employees, which should apply to most Atascadero businesses, and can demonstrate at least a 25% reduction in gross receipts between comparable quarters in 2019 and 2020. Now, I will say that the chamber has reached out to some of our members who are banking loan partners, and the recommended source for those looking to apply for a loan is called The Loan Source. So if there are questions about it, we recommend that folks contact the chamber or explore submitting an application through theloansource.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. And I do see a hand raised on the public comment callers, Luke.
Yes, our first caller is Jeff Oslin.
Good evening, council. Welcome to 2021. A couple of things to bring up tonight. One would be, I would like to ask the city to look into accepting credit cards for fees within the city, and I think there's viable options that the customer could pay the fee, that the processing fee to do such a thing. But I think it would make a lot of things a lot easier, especially now the way COVID is going on. Secondly, I want to applaud our council for not agendizing the community power. I think it's a great move not to, and at least wait one more year to see what the bills really look like from other cities. I can tell you firsthand, it was very complicated to opt out in the city of Paso. I have friends that tried to do it, and it wasn't very easy. And unlike a cell phone, you get to opt in to your carrier. In this case, if the city was to enact the community power, you have to opt out. So again, I want to commend the city for not bringing it to the agenda. That's all I have, and welcome, chief. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oslin. Luke, would the other caller like to speak?
Yes, our next caller is David May.
Hello?
Yes, welcome, Mr. May.
Hi. Looking at the computer, I think I recognize everybody.
Excellent. You might want to turn on the TV or something in the background because it's echoing.
We're, yeah, we're trying to mute.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead?
There's no mute.
Well, let's see what we can do. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. My issue is places for the homeless to use the restroom during the day. I'm the ground supervisor at the community church, and every week, we're, we have a dumpster full of adult diapers, which seems to be a lot, a lot of waste, when most of these folks just need a place to go and use the restroom during the day. And maybe I just haven't used, done my homework on the issue, but I would just like to know if the city has any plans for having any sort of porta-potties or anything else available within the city for these folks to not have to use adult diapers. And that's basically my issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May. And I see no other hand raised. I will just ask one more time if there's anybody on the webinar who wishes to speak. Go ahead and raise your hand now.
And for the one attendee who is on the phone, if you would like to speak, you can type *9 on your keypad, and it'll raise your hand in the webinar so we can know you want to speak.
All right, so I see a hand raised with the phone number there, Luke. And that person is muted. If you raised your hand, you are muted.
So the caller is being prompted right now to hit *6 on their phone to unmute their line. And there they go.
Yes, this is Edward Veek. I live at 5725 Chaplin Avenue. I'm against the electric coalition. As far as I can see, they just want to sell products from other people, which means they're going to mark it up. And I think we can do our own marking up our own selves if we want to mark something up. And there is not enough electricity from solar and wind to handle California, especially since California has an agenda to get rid of all of the, all of the power companies that there are, like Diablo. I think the energies generation of California has really gone downhill. We need to fight to save the Diablo Plant, stop the dismantling of it, and I do not believe that we need to get into a coalition with someone that's going to be a middleman, and they'll just mark up the product higher and higher and get a larger cut. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Veek. Luke, is there anybody else on the phone that might wish to speak?
No, we have no other callers.
Okay, and I am seeing somebody in the webinar. However, we have already, we're not doing a second round with individuals, so if you have already spoken and would like to contact the city clerk's office or email the council, please do that. So we are going to go ahead and close public comment, and I do thank you all for your comments. And any member of the public who has questions or needs information, you can contact the city clerk's office at 805-470-3400 or cityclerk@atascadero.org. And, you know, things brought up during public comment do not become a subject of conversation during the council meeting because it's not agendized. But I will ask those, if the city manager could maybe respond to Mr. May's question about places for the homeless to use the restroom during the day. I know that we have many, and if you could let us know what those are.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do want to let people know that City Hall restrooms remain open, although City Hall is closed for most traffic. We're trying to push everything, people to do it through phone calls, Zoom calls like this, or online. It is still open, so those bathrooms are open Monday through Friday from 8:30 to 5:00 p.m. They do stay open a little bit later during farmer's market on Wednesdays. All of our park restrooms are open to the public during the daylight hours, and so we have restrooms at Colony Park Community Center. There in the community center itself, at the back by the playground, we have the upper restroom at the lake park open, restrooms at Paloma open. And in addition, we worked with Echo earlier this year to have a 24/7 porta-potty there and hand washing station so that the homeless have, and everyone has access to a restroom at all times. I have to admit, I have not checked in with Echo recently to verify that was still there, but that is my understanding.
I was there last Wednesday, and it was still there.
There we go.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Ms. Rickard. All right, so now we are on to, we have no public hearings tonight, and we are on to our One Management Report, which is the 2021, 2023, and D20 priorities for the Public Outreach Kickoff Session. And so I will be turning this over to Director Rankell.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. I am going to share my screen. Can you all see the PowerPoint? Okay, excellent. I am so excited to bring this to you tonight. We're just very pleased to be able to start the budget process and take a look at the D20 priorities. This funding provides just so many opportunities for us that we haven't had in such a long time to really take a look and fund some of those things that have just really been out of reach. So I'm very excited to bring this to you tonight and to receive feedback. And we are, as staff, looking to receive feedback from the council and the community on priorities for the upcoming budget and the expenditure of the G20 funds that will go into play starting April 1st, and then we will receive them down the line for that. This is the first of 10 public outreach meetings, as City Manager Rickard was discussing earlier, to both disseminate information, to provide information out to kind of where we are and what we are doing now, and then to gather all of that public input back on priorities. As I said, these are the 10 opportunities. They are study sessions, one through nine, pretty much similar. So a member of the public could attend one and won't miss out on any other opportunities. We've tried to schedule them on different days of the week and different times of day to provide the best opportunity for everyone to be able to participate. This is kind of a diagram of the typical budget process we have. Normally, we have somewhere around eight public meetings. We gather information. We come to council. There's strategic planning. We go through this whole process. We've really expanded that this year to really get in there and get the feedback from the public, to reach out, to hear people, what they're wanting, what the priorities are, and to really be guided through council by that process. Like I said, public input is always encouraged. The public has opportunities at any time, like this kickoff session tonight, any of the nine study sessions. Those will accumulate into the council strategic planning session. It's a day and a half on February 19th and 20th. There will be more council meetings in March and April to discuss the budget issues, and then a minimum of six finance committee meetings. Those will be in the April and May timeframe. And then finally, the adoption of the budget, which would be in June. For the current status of city finances, we have a lot of resources. So we did the Talk on the Block series. The Talk on the Block slides are on the city's website, so those are accessible to anybody who's interested in seeing those. We will have a short video coming up shortly that will provide some additional information on kind of where we are and some of the outstanding issues we have. We also have our audited financial statements that will be coming to council for approval on the next meeting on January 26. And on that same meeting, we have the update to the financial strategy. So a lot of information coming up, a lot of information available for anybody who's interested in finding that. The Talk on the Block information has been discussed a lot, and like I said, it is on the public, the city's website. But I did want to just point out this particular graph because this is really key to our current situation. This shows that the city's general fund revenue per capita, as compared with the other cities in the county, is the lowest. So we are at $745 per capita for general fund revenue compared to our neighbors you see there. Our closest neighbors are about twice what we are. This really tells the story on why our budget is so tight and why we aren't able to fund services as generous as other cities are. The city, by necessity, spends less per capita than the other cities because of this very reason. And in addition to generally providing lower service levels than the neighboring jurisdictions, the city also has to make ends meet by deferring or reducing expenses, which has led the city led to a lot of critical needs that have been identified by staff. So this is kind of a categorical list of needs that the staff has identified. These are highlighted in the video that we'd like to share with you now. So Luke, if I can get you to share the video, that would be great.
And while we're queuing up the video, I will, I want to let the public know that the reason we're doing this video is we want to make sure, number one, that we get all the information in a concise timeframe and that we don't leave something out because it's easy to get talking on something, and then you forget something, or you say something to one group and you don't say it to another. So what you're going to hear tonight in this video is what will be shown in all nine study sessions. So it's important that everybody gets that same information and that it is complete. So wanted to let you know why we were doing a video. Luke, how's that coming?
Give me one second.
We had so much practice tonight. This one's going to be spot on. And I have a feeling after that echo fiasco, Mark is not going to take his mic off mute the entire night.
On behalf of the city of Atascadero and the Atascadero Fire Department, I want to thank you for participating in our community by being part of this public meeting. The passing of tax measure D20 provides a lot of opportunities to expand and improve upon our city and our fire department. Public safety personnel rely on a variety of tools and equipment that are crucial to mitigating these emergencies. Traffic collisions sometimes require extrication tools, like the Jaws of Life, to remove a trapped occupant from a vehicle. Every medical emergency, fire paramedics use cardiac monitors to assess and treat patients. Firefighters require specialized breathing apparatus to fight structural fires, keeping their airways safe from fatal heat and gases. Both fire and police require specialized protection as part of their uniform, like firefighter turnouts and bulletproof vests and helmets. All public safety members rely heavily on radios for communication, which not only means handheld and mobile radios, but also the towers and equipment that support the radio network. Recent mandates by the state have placed additional requirements on the police department radio system. These new requirements are expensive and currently do not have a funding source. Also, standby generators are important pieces of equipment throughout the city that allow services to continue uninterrupted during power outages or that allow services to continue uninterrupted during power outages or P G and E power shutdowns. Generators provide backup power to our essential service buildings such as police and fire stations, but also power essential functions such as radio repeater sites, wastewater lift stations, and zoo refrigerators. While all of these tools and equipment are critical to public safety, none have been fully funded through the city budget due to financial constraints. Police, fire, and public works have relied many times on grants and donations to fund this equipment. The sales tax measure can ensure necessary safety equipment is properly funded to allow continued effective emergency services. The fire department's fleet of emergency vehicles, including all fire engines and the ladder truck, does not currently have a replacement fund in place. Both of our fire stations respond to most emergencies in a structured firefighting engine. This is the engine you see most often because it is it is equipped with nearly everything we need for a variety of emergencies, including medical calls. We also have a wildland firefighting engine in each station, meaning that if they are dispatched to a vegetation fire, they will respond in a smaller engine that are suited for narrow streets or off-road terrain. At Station Two, their aerial ladder truck is housed for large commercial building or multifamily apartment fires. The truck's ladder reaches a hundred feet and allows firefighters to quickly access upper floors and rooftops to rescue those trapped by fire. It can also be used for aerial master streams, which means a large volume of water from an elevated position. The public works department also has concern for aging vehicles critical to their mission. Public Works staff use many types of vehicles, including compacters, loaders, baccos, and park mowers for routine daily operations, as well as to assist fire and police personnel during storms, flooding, or other emergencies. While we exercise great care in maintaining and caring for city-owned apparatus and vehicles, we understand that these vehicles have a finite life. These vehicles are costly and require setting aside funding annually in anticipation of replacing once the vehicle is no longer reliable for its intended use. Unfortunately, the city budget has not been able to contribute to these replacement schedules for many years, causing concern for the aging apparatus that will soon need to be replaced. Reliable emergency vehicles are a fundamental component of any city service, and we hope to continue serving the Atascadero community by funding necessary apparatus for each department mission. Over the decades, our facilities have housed many firefighters while they worked to protect the City of Atascadero. Built in nineteen fifty-two, Station One on Lewis Avenue was designed as a station for a mostly volunteer firefighting staff. From volunteer firefighter beginnings, the station morphed into what we have today, which required several remodels and changes along the way. Station One now facilitates twenty-four-seven staffing, which required the additions of bedrooms, bathrooms, and a kitchen. It houses three fire engines, one rescue trailer, one ambulance, and several command vehicles. It provides storage for advanced medical equipment and supplies, self-contained breathing apparatus equipment, a firefighter turnout washer, breathing air compressor, and so much more. While we take great pride in maintaining our fire station, it is showing signs of its nearly seventy-year-old age. Water-stained ceiling tiles, masonry cracks throughout the station flooring, driveway, and exterior columns, diesel exhausts stained walls, small rooms, and limited storage all speak to the underlying issues that our current budget has been unable to fix. Safety items to be addressed include the structural stability and earthquake retrofit of both the roof structure and the hose tower. The station needs updated features to keep firefighters safe. Cancer-causing agents such as vehicle exhaust and dirty turnout gear or biohazards on medical equipment need to be isolated from the living quarters to keep firefighters safe and healthy. Fire Station Two was built in the mid nineteen eighties and is also showing its age. With one bedroom and a small square footage, it was built to house two firefighters. With four firefighters now on duty at the station during the wildfire season, the small footprint provides for very cramped quarters, especially during the season of COVID nineteen and the need for social distancing in the fire station.
The Atascadero Police Department was established in nineteen eighty with nineteen sworn officers serving just over sixteen thousand residents. The department grew commensurate with the population through the eighties and into the early nineties. In nineteen ninety-four, the department reached twenty-nine sworn officers to keep pace with the twenty-four thousand residents. The department peaked at thirty officers in the early two thousands. However, we lost three positions due to the Great Recession in two thousand seven to two thousand nine. The current population of Atascadero is estimated at thirty thousand three hundred and five, which is twenty-one percent growth since nineteen ninety-four, but we have the staffing that stayed the same at twenty-nine officers. The city's financial hardships have also impacted the department's ability to grow with the population and leave us with the same staffing level as twenty-seven years ago. If the department had grown commensurate with the population, we would have thirty-seven officers for twenty-twenty's population level. And again, we only have twenty-nine officers doing the work of thirty-seven. In comparing all seven police departments in our county, Atascadero has the lowest staffing per capita in the county. The minimum staffing in nineteen eighty was established with one supervisor and two officers. Our minimum staffing level has never increased, and in twenty nineteen, the Atascadero Police Department operated at nineteen eighty staffing or one supervisor and two officers for fifty-two percent of the year. This was not an anomaly. In twenty eighteen, it was fifty-four percent of the year. Although twenty-nine sworn officers were adequate in nineteen ninety-four, they are not nearly enough to handle the workload in twenty twenty. Aside from the increased calls associated with a twenty-one percent growth in our population, our community has been faced with an opioid epidemic and an influx of homeless-related calls for service. Along with these calls, there are mental health problems associated with these issues, and communities across California, including Atascadero, are also suffering the unintended consequences of the recent trend to decriminalize narcotics and other crimes. In two thousand eleven, Assembly Bill one oh nine shifted much of the prison population to county jails, which were not designed nor equipped for this function and quickly caused the jails to be overcrowded. Proposition forty-seven in twenty fourteen reduced certain theft and drug offenses from felonies to misdemeanors, and Proposition fifty-seven in twenty sixteen allowed parole consideration instead of incarceration for nonviolent offenders, which all combined has resulted in a substantial increase in offenders' release without incarceration. This has and will continue to increase the number of offenders remaining in our community and significantly increase criminal activity in our community. Combine this with other recent requirements, such as the new federal reporting standards that increase the amount of reports officers are required to take, the change in medical clearance and procedures for mental health detentions and county jail bookings, increased training standards, all result in task-saturated officers that spend less time on patrol. This directly impacts our response times and the time our officers are able to spend on calls for service. Although this narrative is focused on the police department staffing shortages, every department in the city is understaffed. When compared to other communities of our size, the staffing history and numbers for planning, public works, finance, administration are all similar to those of the police department. This affects staff's ability to provide the expected level of city services across the board. Atascadero's financial hardships have had a devastating effect on employee retention. The inability to offer competitive salaries with our neighborhood agencies have resulted in the loss of quality, experienced employees from every department in this city. The police department alone has lost six officers and two dispatchers within the last two and a half years. This equates to twenty percent of our sworn police officers and twenty-eight percent of our dispatch staff. Due to the salary disparity, the dispatch positions have remained unfilled for over two years because we've been unable to attract applicants at the current pay scale. With a lack of retention, we typically lose employees when they reach an optimal performance level, causing us to start the hiring process and training process over. This process is time-consuming and intensive. Once the employee is hired, they begin the training program. After the formal training program, the employee is still learning the job, and it takes about a year from the employee's start date in order for them to gain the experience so they can function at a level that they can handle the workload of the employee that they just replaced. It takes several additional years for them to become well-rounded veteran officers and dispatchers. The hiring and training process leaves a gap in staffing, so our already stretched resources are working further shorthanded. The problem is exacerbated when we are unable to hire officers that have completed a police academy. When we send a new hire through the police academy, it adds another six months patrol will work shorthanded. The lack of retention has turned our department into a training ground for other departments. Atascadero spends the money, effort, and risk in hiring the employee, training them, and giving them the opportunity to learn the job. When the employee leaves, other departments benefit by hiring trained and capable officers or dispatchers. A well-trained and veteran department is efficient and has less liability than a department that has primarily a staff with limited experience. This is again true for all departments within the city. Employee attraction and retention has become a crisis in most departments in the city. Losses of key employees with institutional knowledge cause delays, inefficiencies, and additional overtime costs in order to complete the work needed to provide service to our city. The city's inability to attract qualified applicants to fill some vacancies only intensifies the cost, delays, and inefficiencies. It is important that we point out we are not classifying individuals based on their housing status. We're referring to those people who are engaged in behavior that precipitates a call for service for public safety or other city resources. Our city, like many others throughout California and the rest of the nation, were not intended or equipped to handle the additional workload associated with the homeless crisis. The influx of people who were living in the streets have impacted every department in the city. Many of the individuals are suffering from mental health issues and/or substance abuse problems. The most noticeable issues are the panhandling, public disturbance, and other nuisance calls, such as scavenging and camping on the sidewalk or other public areas. Many of these individuals have underlying health problems. Our fire department is frequently called to treat and assess everything from a minor cut to shortness of breath, a stroke, or mental illness. This takes one of our two fire engines out of service, and when further treatment is necessary, they are transported to a local hospital, taking one of the ambulances out of service for an extended time. The impact on the police department has also been significant. In two thousand eighteen, we received five hundred and thirteen calls for service related to illegal camping and eighty-one calls for panhandling. Our department partnered with County Behavioral Health and partnered a social worker with one of our detectives for a part-time community action team. These teams have been highly successful for the San Luis Obispo Police Department and our Sheriff's Department. The goal of the team is to identify those individuals who would benefit from the resources available and be the intermediary for those services are utilized. We've had success with the program, however, we're unable to fill the position for a period of time due to staffing shortages. The illegal camps throughout the city have a significant impact on the environment and the general quality of life for the neighborhood. The creeks, rivers, underpasses, and other areas of encampment were never designed to be somebody's home. The homeless crisis addiction issues have led people to establish camps where there is no sanitary services, no heat, no water, and no other basic necessities for life. The camps contain a large amount of trash and personal refuse. Legally, notices must be posted at the camps before cleanup and property removed must be retained for a substantial period of time before disposal. Cleanup of these camps is also a fairly time-consuming job as cleanup workers must be extremely cautious as dirty needles and other biohazards are often found amongst the camp debris. The workload involved in the cleanups and debris removal must be balanced with the workload and primary responsibilities of a public works department that is stretched too thin to maintain the one hundred and six acres of parks, the one hundred and forty miles of streets, and the many city facilities that are the primary responsibility of the personnel. There is not sufficient staff nor funding for the additional workup of camps cleanup.
The city owns and maintains many assets that are used by the community every day. These assets include roads, storm drains, parks and trails, Atascadero Lake, Charles Paddock Zoo, and public buildings. Many of these facilities were constructed long ago and funded with one-time expenditures, such as grants and impact fees, or constructed by private developers or community groups. Many assets are at the end of their useful life and need to be replaced, upgraded, or have major repairs that have been deferred due to a lack of funding. Storm drains and culverts handle stormwater runoff to prevent flooding and other problems caused by pounding water. The city has over seventeen hundred storm pipes totaling nearly thirty miles and six hundred inlets with no funding source to replace them. About one-third of these pipes are in poor or failed condition. Park facilities are also deteriorating, including parking lots, sidewalks, benches, picnic tables, playgrounds, restrooms, and athletic facilities. The shoreline retaining walls and dock on Atascadero Lake needs significant work, and the lake requires costly dredging to keep it healthy. Many of the animal exhibits at the zoo are very old and functionally obsolete. These must be replaced in the near future for the care of endangered animals and to maintain AZA certification. City buildings like City Hall, Police and Fire Stations, Pavilion, and the Community Center require continuous maintenance and building systems such as roofs, HVAC units, plumbing, and electrical need replacement as these buildings age. Lastly, roads. The city maintains over a hundred and forty miles of roads. We all drive worn-out roads every day, and we know the shape they are in and what potholes to avoid. Measure F fourteen has helped a lot, but we need to invest more if we want to improve the overall condition of our roadway system. Replacing and repairing these assets has been put off in order to make ends meet. Some items like playground equipment, shade structures, or picnic benches are removed until donations are made to replace them. Other critical infrastructure that must be replaced or fixed, like a failed culvert, is done as an emergency measure at a cost to some other service program or capital replacement. It is important to find ongoing funding to repair and replace these items as necessary. There are other public assets that many think are the city's responsibility, but due to a lack of funding or by code, these items are actually the responsibility of adjacent property owners. Many property owners feel that this is unfair, and care for these assets may be worth considering for city funding. Property owners are often surprised to find out that sidewalks and street trees in the public way are actually their responsibility. Assuming that the city takes care of these items, they often fall into a state of disrepair until a problem occurs and the property owner and the city are sued. A lot of staff time is spent to notice and explain this responsibility to property owners, and it takes funds to defend the city in lawsuits. There are also over thirty miles of public streets in Atascadero that are not maintained by the city, but instead by property owners that live on the street. Many of these streets were never built to city standards, but others met city standards but were never accepted after completion. These public roads are used like city-maintain roads, but the burden to maintain and repair them falls to the adjacent property owners, who pay the same taxes as those on city-maintained streets. There's also a community facility district that some newer residential units are required to pay an additional tax of about seven hundred dollars each year to help offset the homes' impact to police, fire, and parks. A new unit that is not allowed by right must pay this additional tax while other new and existing units do not.
Hi, I'm Phil Dunsmore with the City of Atascadero Community Development Department. How can Atascadero become the place we want it to be? With good-paying jobs, along with the things that people desire, such as restaurants, shops, and entertainment. How can we continue to make Atascadero a great place to live with attractive neighborhoods and quality public spaces in our downtown? It takes investments from people to open a business such as restaurants, shops, entertainment, and commercial business that creates jobs. The city can't require people to invest in Atascadero, well, we can encourage it by investing in public resources to entice those businesses to locate here in Atascadero. This is economic development. Businesses want to be located where their customers are and where their employees want to be. Now, the city can help with things like infrastructure investment, for example, investment in sidewalks, street trees, and pedestrian-friendly areas that attract shops, restaurants, and employers. Previously, the city had been successful in finding other funding sources, grants, special funds, and other ways to add amenities to our community, to enrich our community. But a lot of these funds have dried up in recent years. But the need to revitalize Atascadero and make our community more attractive still remains. Placemaking, another option. Investments to make Atascadero attractive potential businesses include the little things, even like removal of the pigeons from the downtown, providing events and activities that draw people to to a place, and encouraging creative ideas like outdoor dining and attractive storefronts from business owners to bring people into our downtown. Or things like increasing broadband capabilities. Strong internet capabilities are the backbone of most businesses today. And as part of economic development, the city could look at facilitating and investing to increase broadband capabilities in our community that would attract both businesses that currently can't locate here and by providing access to another tool to help make existing businesses more successful. Marketing, another great tool. Potential restaurant investors, shop owners, and businesses can't locate their business in Atascadero unless they know about Atascadero and what our community can offer. We need staff that can be dedicated to seeking out and working with potential businesses and shops, restaurants, to attract them to Atascadero and share the quality of life that we have here. In summary, it takes additional resources that aren't currently available to be able to provide economic development, to attract the things that we want to see for the future of Atascadero.
City operational budgets are tight due to the limited type and amount of revenue the city receives. Ideally, the budget each department has to perform its essential services should grow each year at a rate that keeps pace with the growth of both the city and inflation. While revenues have increased over the years, they have not grown enough to keep up with the expenses. While revenues have increased over the years, they have not grown enough to keep up with the expenses. Some of the operational costs have not only grown due to inflation, but have grown significantly more than that in the last 15 years or so. The cost of water to irrigate the parks has more than doubled from about $69,000 in 2006 to $145,000 in 2020. The cost of animal food at the Charles Paddock Zoo was about $15,000 in 2006, but the cost in 2020 was about $90,000 for a similar amount of animals. That's about three times the cost in 15 years. Electricity costs have soared. The cost to light the street signals and lights have almost doubled from $49,000 to $90,000. And at the zoo, the electricity has almost doubled from $15,000 to $35,000 in that same timeframe. In 2019, the city implemented a program to improve the lake quality. This has been effective at helping the lake become more healthy, but it comes at a cost of about $20,000 per year. The city has not been able to expand its fleet to match the number of vehicles it needs for each of the employees to do their jobs. It has not had the room in the operating budget to allow for the purchase, maintenance, and replacement of the needed number of vehicles. Limited vehicles impact the speed at which projects in the field can be viewed, inspected, and approved. Over the last decade, the city has seen a steep increase in cost regulatory compliance. For example, stormwater runoff throughout the city's storm drains is regulated and requires an annual MS4 stormwater permit. The permit costs about $14,000 each year in addition to the costs of a host of other requirements, including reporting and staff time. The stormwater trash amendment is a relatively new regulation and requires collection and removal of 100% of all trash before it goes down the storm drain. Data collection and reporting is required on the quantity of trash collected and removed. Meeting this requirement is estimated to cost about $20,000 annually. Technology costs continue to rise. The two biggest concerns in the field of technology are data management, our data loss, and data corruption. Data backup and redundancy are critical to protect against these two concerns and are the backbone of the city's technological infrastructure, but come at an additional cost. There are opportunities to increase efficiencies. Investments in particular areas are likely to magnify the return on such outlays. For example, making strategic investments in the city's technology, the city's information database, can be tapped to improve the city's quality of data in response to public records. Another idea is an infrastructure management system. It's essentially software that allows staff more efficient management of fixed-location-type general assets. This includes things like roads, storm drains, and street signs. It could even include things like vehicles, heavy machinery, and equipment.
Okay, well, I hope you all enjoyed that, and I hope it provided a lot of information. As the mayor said, it categorized and allows us to go through all of the needs and hit on all the points so that we can share those across all of the meetings that we'll be having. So it's important to really capture the citizen input on both the high-level goals and at the same time really get an understanding of the detail of why those goals are important. We're looking for a broader understanding of public expectations, not just the question or answers to the question like, "What are your top three priorities for the city?" We're really looking for the discussion behind that and the understanding of really what's driving that. We're trying to really drive the meaningful dialogue and get these results in the public outreach meeting so that we can get meaningful data to the council for them to consider at the strategic planning session. So as I said, each of these nine sessions will lead up to this council strategic planning session on February 19th and 20th. In order to stimulate a broader dialogue and understanding, the format for each of the study sessions will be as follows. So do an introduction of staff. We'll run the video that we all just saw. We'll do some questions and answers, and then we'll break out into small working groups. So the small working groups will ideally have a couple of staff members each to really get into those small groups to be able to get closer and make everybody feel comfortable and make sure that we can have an opportunity to hear from everyone in the group. So in that process, we're really going into these types of questions throughout that dialogue in that breakout session. What's going well in the city? So we want to hear, what's the status? Where are people coming from? What are we doing well so far? And then, of course, the next question would be, what things, big and small, would make Atascadero better? So kind of that meter of, where are we? Where do we want to go? The city has really promised to spend some of those items on some of the items in the video that you just saw. We've been putting off a lot of expenses that we use every day, the storm drains, the roads. All of that gets used every day. We do need to put some investments into some of those items, but a lot of those items are not things that people typically think about when they think about priorities for new funding sources. But we do want to introduce those out to the community and really get feedback on which of these items do you think are most important or which do you think could be delayed a little longer? And then, if the city spent the D-20 funds perfectly, what would success look like? What does that really mean? And then, how do we measure that success? We would like to make sure that things are transparent and that everybody can trust that the city is spending the funds wisely, as we have promised. So we want to know how do we report that? How does that go back out into the community defining that measure of success? And then, of course, just a follow-up with anything else. What else? Is there anything else we missed that we didn't touch on and really get that feedback? Just in conclusion, Measure 20 will provide a lot of needed funding. We've been looking forward for a long time, so this will be a great opportunity for us. The council and the community have a tremendous responsibility to spend this wisely, of course. Numerous unfunded necessities need to be prioritized to continue the existing service levels, and the community can participate in feedback on priorities and true expectations. And the upcoming decisions well set the course into the future. And with that, I'd like to conclude my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Rangel. So to lay out what we're going to do tonight, we will first do council questions. And so, just so that we're clear and the public understands what we're doing tonight as a council, we are doing two things. One, we are giving feedback to staff on the types of questions that you saw Ms. Rangel show, that here's how we're going to be doing these public meetings. And so, we're giving feedback and asking questions with regards to those meetings to make sure that we're getting the feedback that we need come February 19th and 20th. Then, we will be going to public comment in hearing from those of you that are here tonight on what you would like to say about your priorities, some of the answers to those questions. And then, all of this, along with the other nine sessions, will be brought to council at our strategic planning meeting, where all of the public is invited to attend as well, where we will then look at your feedback and talk about how we want to move forward with priorities. So tonight, the council is not discussing these priorities and funding and all of that. That is not our discussion tonight. Our discussion is on the process for the public. When we do get to public comment, I want to note a few things. Tonight will be a little bit different. If you decide to comment tonight, and you're more than welcome to, you will have three minutes. What I really encourage you to do, whether you comment tonight or not, is to attend one of those nine study sessions. Because in those nine study sessions, and you only need to attend one of them, you have that ability, as you saw, to have a more robust, personal back-and-forth discussion. Whereas tonight, it's just more of a one-way. So you're more than welcome to do both. I highly encourage you to call in for one of those meetings. Secondly, I want you to think in broad terms of priorities, as was discussed in the video. So this is less about, hey, this particular street has some potholes, and more about, hey, I think streets are a major priority. So we're not looking for, I think you should go spend money here, but that bigger discussion that helps to drive the overall priorities. So with that, what I'd like to do is see if there are council questions of staff, and then, once we finish council questions, let's take a brief break, and then we will come back and go to public comment. So with that, I will look just to hands. Are there any council members who have questions for staff? Councilmember Funk.
Yes, first of all, I want to thank the staff for a very thorough and informative report and for participating in the video. One question, then this might be for Chief Bryson. Do we have any positions in the city that are currently funded by grants that we will lose funding for and that we need to replace in order to keep doing the services that we're currently providing to the community?
I can answer that if you'd like. Yes, we do currently have one that is funded through an Assistance to Firefighters grant. So that is one position that we leverage to get the battalion chief position. So that will be concluding shortly. We do keep applying for those to further our dollar, but the competition is very steep, so yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? All right, we've had, you'll notice that we've had a lot of this discussion leading up to this. And even before the election, we had a lot of discussion about this feedback process and what we wanted to see. And I think I speak for all of us when we say thank you to the public for passing D-20. It was a unanimous decision by council to move forward with this because we saw the necessity. And so, we really thank you for seeing that as well, and we thank you for being here tonight. We thank those of you that are going to be coming to those nine sessions, being involved. We want your voice heard, so thank you for seeing the need and investing in Atascadero. I think, Councilmember Funk, I saw your hand again.
Yeah, one other process question. When people, there's a link on the homepage of the city's website so that people, right towards the bottom, a nice big banner, where people can click on to get the information about when the sessions are and also to join the sessions. When you click on that link right now, it takes you to a registration page. Is it necessary for people to pre-register for a session? Or is that just simply that once they click on to that, that registration link, they put in that information, they can immediately join the session that might be in progress?
I might defer that question to either Mr. Knight or City Manager Rickard. I'm not sure about that.
I could take a stab at that. This is Luke Knight. The registration is immediate. The registration allows us to better track who is attending the meetings. There is no wait time. As soon as you click on the link, enter your name and email, you get to hop right in the meeting. So there's no delay in joining the meeting with registration.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
The city attorney pop on, I figure there's something she's got to say.
Yes, I should add that under the Brown Act, we cannot require that anyone register to attend a meeting. So I'm not sure if they're able to attend the meeting without registering, if the registration is just recommended, or Luke, can you clarify on that?
At the moment, registration is required. That may be able to be changed.
Well, it needs to be changed. Now, if the registration's needed so that they can attend the meeting electronically, that's fine.
So we will work on that and make sure that people have the option to register and participate. I think we were hoping to get at least first names from people so that we can... We're planning on having conversations, and that would be helpful. If they don't want to give it, at this point, they could probably enter a first name of XXX or something similar, but we will make sure that we are compliant.
Yeah. Wonderful, thank you. And with that, it is 7:51. Why don't we take a short break, come back at 8:00 PM, and we will go to public comment. Right? Right, I think we can come back on here. All right, I'm seeing three of us. Four of us. One more.
And we're not echoing. That's good.
Not echoing, we're good. All right, wonderful. Luke, can you go ahead and make us live and let me know when we're ready to go?
Yep, we are good to go.
Okay, fabulous. Thank you. So again, we are going to go ahead now and open up to public comment on this item. So what we're wanting to hear from you. You will have three minutes and we want to hear from you, your feedback and input on these priorities. And again, what's most useful is if you keep it broad, not, you know, hey, my street needs paving. We do want to hear about your street or potholes or all the little things. But tonight, what's most useful is if we hear from you really about what your priorities are. With regards to the, the types of questions that we were talking about and what you want to see in the city, the things, you know, what's going well, but you know, big and small, what would make a difference, what services are really important to you. So that's where we want to hear from you. And again, encourage you, whether you speak or not tonight, to attend one of the nine upcoming study sessions. And with that, public comment is open and I will go to the attendees list and I will look for raised hands. At the moment, I'm not seeing any, but I'll give you, give you some time here. All right, our first one will be Brandon Roberts.
All right, Brandon Roberts, President of
Brandon Roberts, President of Brandon Roberts,
We're gonna have to hold on a second, we're getting
ballot last election. Especially regarding the fire service.
Okay, Brandon, Brandon, if you could hold on for one second, I'm going to ask you to start over. We had a little bit of an issue with echo. And so if you could start from ground one and we'll, Luke, I'll just have a timer here on my side. That might be easier. Maybe that was part of the problem. So Mr. Roberts, go ahead.
All right, can you hear me?
I can hear you just fine. Thank you.
No, no echo?
No echo, you're good to go.
Okay, good. All right. So again, Brandon Roberts, Tascadero Professional Firefighters, President, Local 3600. We would like to thank the city staff and members of the city council that worked to put this tax measure on the ballot last election. And we also like to thank the voters who supported D 20, which we believe can address our, address our growing budgetary concerns. Especially related to fire and police services. We hope to continue the conversation to show that funding is needed and the future impacts of our ability to adequately protect the community with or without allocated funding from the tax measure. Last year, the citywide poll showed that 86% of the Tascadero residents support the use of D 20 funds for fire protection and paramedic services. This includes staffing. We, the same poll showed that 81% of our residents support D 20 funding to retrofit our fire stations. We stand with our community and advocating for D 20 funds to be used in part towards fire protection emergency services. But we do look forward to having personnel at each one of those public meetings coming up. And we look forward to hearing from the public and hope that the, the funding goes allocated to where our, our community wants it to go. Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. And I will keep looking to hands. Are there any other members of the public who are here on the webinar who would like to speak? Or any, I know we've got one caller on the phone. Anyone who would like there's somebody who doesn't, who isn't muted and we're hearing you. And that might be you, Brandon. There you go. Okay, seriously, any members of the public who want to speak on this, I'm seeing no hands. And it may be that you're thinking, hey, I'm just going to, to go to one of the nine sessions and that's fantastic. If you want to speak tonight, we are here, we are listening and are more than, more than happy to hear from you. Your input is very, very important to us. I'm gonna do it going once, going twice. I am seeing no hands raised. Luke, is there any chance someone's raising a hand and I'm just not seeing it or we just don't have anyone wanting to speak tonight? I'm a little, little surprised.
Yeah, I don't see any hands raised. We do have one caller on the public call line.
I think you would press star nine if you wanted to speak.
Yeah, so I could pass it through. This is Jeff Oslin.
Good evening, council, once again. I would like to make a few comments. That presentation was excellent. I think it's off to a great start. And I will be attending one of those nine meetings to give my feedback as well. But a couple of things I think I'd like to bring up in regards to the D 20 funds and infrastructure like the firehouse or police and fire officers that we may need to hire. And one of the ideas would be to hire a grant writing firm with some of those funds. I don't know what it costs, quarter of a million, 300,000, wouldn't really matter. If we hired a grant writing firm, that would take stress off of our staff from having to look for grants and do it, which would allow our staff in the city to do their jobs more efficiently. And we may not need to hire as many staff members because of that. And then if they could look for grant money, which is really our tax money that's going elsewhere and get it back for, would say a new firehouse or renovation of a firehouse. And if we got 70 or 80% of federal or state funds that go towards that, again, grant money. That's money we don't have to pay back. And it's tax money coming back to us. That would parlay our funds to be able to do more things with them and be more efficient. So those are just some suggestions that I would like to make sure we look into and see if it makes great fiscal sense, including hire officers under grant funds for a traffic officer, DUI enforcement. And that at least would give us some time before we would have to pay 100% of their salaries. Going forward, I believe it's like 80%, 50% and then 20% contribution from the city or something like that, if we were able to get a couple more. And that would allow us to go further because these funds are only going to go so far. So that's my comment for the night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oslin. And is there anybody else, any other member, one last call, any other member, one wishing to speak here at public comment, please raise your hand. I'm still seeing many, many of you here. But it could just be tonight's not your, the night you want to speak and that's okay. And with that, one last call, I will go ahead and close a public comment and bring it back to, to the council.
I am right now. Sorry, I do have, we do have the one email that we received.
Ah, yes, thank you very much. So opening, reopening public comments. Yes, please share the email comments with the public. Thank you.
Sure. I'm going to go ahead and read it. Now, my name is Victoria Cronza. I am a homeowner, young mother and bicyclist in Atascadero. When I look at the ways in which public safety and health can be approved, I think about quality of life and environment. Equity around low-cost transportation options and accessibility to safe and connected streets. A big challenge to recreating and commuting on foot or by bike are traffic collisions and heat-related illnesses. There is an intersection to be made between trees and bikes. I'd like to advocate funding for streets that cool our town quite literally and make it more pleasant and safe to commute long distances on. What are some low-cost steps we can take now as a city to increase and maintain tree plantings and bicycle safety and riding? What are some long-term goals, goals we, as we continue to satisfy top priorities and strategically execute already planned projects with measured D 20 funds? Why should bikes and street trees be a priority now? Recent content requirements for general plan updates focus on inclusive roadway design for multiple users called complete streets. AB 1358, reduction of greenhouse gas emissions by 40% in 2030 from their 2020 levels through land use and mobility policy and programs. AB 32, SB 97 S dash 13 dash 08. And environmental justice linked to disadvantaged communities, SB 1000. These all contribute to a healthier community for a more walkable, safer, cleaner and efficient way for citizens and visitors alike to get around Atascadero. Also, the city could concentrate on implementing goals from the existing downtown enhancement improvement plan adopted in August 2020. The city staff have done a thorough job seeking community input around the road diets, traffic and safety and place making in the plan. I believe grants are being submitted and searched for to fund some or all of the goals. Are there specific goals in the downtown plan that can be funded by measure D 20 around bike safety and shade trees now? Are there other slated projects such as road and curbside construction that can incorporate bike strips? And tree plantings and be additionally funded through D 20? A wish list of options citywide that I would like to see prioritized, ranging from low cost to complex include painting green biking stripes in key trafficked areas. Street tree maintenance and planting, connecting bikelines to a safe path and extending existing bike paths. Especially the one on Highway 41 toward high school and downtown. Kiosk of bike route maps and digital access to them. Funding self-service bike tool stations in key traffic more urban areas of town. And looking into bike share programs with discounts for low income. And that's all I've got.
Thank you very much. Gosh, with 10 seconds to spare. Beautiful. All right, seeing no other public comment requests, we will close public comment. And now as a council, so we will take those, those two comments, we are cataloging and making sure we're tracking all of this. And what I would ask is, Ms. Rangel, if you could bring back up that slide of the, the questions and sort of the format of the nine meetings, because this is where we want to be able to provide, provide any feedback tonight. Jerry, if you're still there, I know I see you there.
Sorry, technical difficulties. Get there, just a moment. And you're looking for the
Well, I think it's really the, well, you've, we've got the format. Why don't we start with that? Why don't we just start with the format? And does council have any input with regards to the format? Then we will go to sort of the, the questions that we're looking at, at posing to the public. So any, any input that you want to see something different or added, anything here with the format of the study sessions? Mayor Proton Newsome.
I'd like to try to mirror the study sessions similar to Talk on the Block. I think the information, the presentation is key to getting some pertinent facts out there. And then I did like in some of our other plannings for traffic calming, where people were able to put in their keywords and do some sticky notes and some other things to get a little bit of feedback. We've talked in the past about making word clouds and some other things that tie in the key points that have interest. So I'd just like to put those two cents in.
And so, and I would ask Jerry, is that something I, I think that in talking with, here she comes. Could you address that? Because I think that is something that staff is, is considering.
Yes, we're really trying to condense a lot of information into a short period of time. I think a lot of the information on Talk the Block was very valuable, but, but trying to get it in without losing people's attention. We're going to try and do that, but we can, we can see what we can get into a 20-minute presentation and, and cut out some of the stuff that we have. As far as the thing, the format, what we're going to try and do, because we're doing this all virtually, the sticky notes gets a little bit harder. But what we are going to be doing is capturing kind of this brainstorming session with answers to each of those questions and capturing it honestly on a Word document. So it's the equivalent of a, you know, one of those white sheets of paper where we, we do our brainstorming. So we'll be capturing everything there. And then once we've completed all nine study sessions, at that point, we're going to be doing some word clouding. And other things that to bring to you guys for our strategic planning session in February. So that is the current format that we're, we're hoping for.
You know, Rishal, on that note, I'm wondering, because I see what you're saying about bringing in the Talk on the Block information. There's only so much we can, you know, inundate the public with. And I think that video does a really
There's only so much we can, you know, inundate the public with, and I think that video does a really good job. Potentially, could we, when somebody signs up for the webinar, could we have a link to additional materials if they, if they so chose to, to pursue looking at that?
Absolutely. I think the majority of people will sign up right away, but certainly stuff that they can look at after. Staff will have those resources at their fingertips. So as we break into small groups, if there's questions or things along those lines, we can bring those up and share those very quickly.
Okay, fantastic. Other council questions? Councilmember Funk.
For the breakout sessions, assuming that are these are going to be breakout rooms in Zoom, if it's a large enough meeting?
Yes, that is correct. We're hoping to get those, those small groups or those breakout rooms down to, you know, three to five members of the public along with, you know, one to two staff members depending how much participation we have. Hopefully we'll have a lot of participation. And we could do, you know, one staff member for every five people would be amazing. So that's our hope.
And then will there be opportunity after the breakout sessions for people to hear any kind of recap about key things that came up in other breakout sessions? Any feedback to the group?
We had
Or is there a lot of time for that?
Yeah, we hadn't planned on that necessarily. We wanted to let it be a little bit more organic. So while we're aiming for a forty five minute session for those breakout sessions, if, if one group is just going like crazy, we want to make sure everybody has a chance to say everything they want to say. And that we feel like we understand what they're trying to get across and have captured that. So we hadn't necessarily planned on that. We did want to also offer some opportunities. If you wanted to ask the police chief question or some of that after. So we, we could do that if that's the desire of council. Not a problem.
It, I, I think you, you have to play that as it lays and see, see if it, you see if it works in this, in the session. Is that, that can be a nice feature for people to sort of hear what, you know, hear more, a bigger picture than the, the, you know, three to five or, or eight people that they might be talking with. But it could also be logistically unworkable. So play that.
Okay.
And then it, the feedback from those, but from each individual working group, that feedback is going to get captured and put onto this Word document and will feed into the clouds.
Yes, and they will be able to see it real time as we're capturing it. So if we, you know, capture it in a phrase and they say, hey, that's, that's not really what I was trying to get out. We can change it right then.
We have to have staff members who can type fast.
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
And I will look to council members of Borbo and Dara's Borbo, yes?
A question for city manager. In terms of, you know, what the information you sent to people in the study session, will you put the projected D twenty revenue in perspective? In the sense that, you know, we anticipate in the neighborhood of four and a half million dollars of revenue annually. What does that mean in the sense of, you know, somebody says, well, gee, I think you should double the size of the police department or, you know, we should just, now we can pave every road. Put it in context of how much of an increase in general fund that, that means. So people could have an idea of what's, what's feasible or plausible.
Yeah, I think that's, that it will be the staff present both to facilitate and capture, but also to provide some of that perspective too, so that we can all have a broader understanding.
Thank you. Oh, and since we, what I'm wondering, how did we publicize this? I know we did a number of different things to publicize this. You don't need to go over all of them, but in, in terms of, it'll be interesting how many people get, I guess.
Yeah.
Participate. And I mean, I kind of suspect we'll get a bunch in the first couple and it'll dwindle and then there'll be more at the end, I guess, people who thought about doing it don't miss out, but.
I am not positive of all the ways that we have advertised it, but I will tell you that I have done articles for both the newspapers and the Chamber of Commerce that listed all of the dates. All of the dates have been on our website since late October. We have flyers and posters that have gone up this week. We have social media. It's posted on all of our Facebook pages, anything related to the city. We're asking people to share it. Terry somehow is boosting the, the electronics and social media postings. Sorry, I'm not, definitely not my thing there. I think Mayor Moreno was on the radio today, so we're trying to get the word out there. If anybody has a way to get that word out, please let us know. We want to get as much participation as possible.
And I think some of us too are sending it to our own, like I'm sure that those of you here in Kiwanis and Rotary, AAUW, right, be getting it out to all of those groups that you know. And then even asking, saying, hey, you know, could you tell one friend about it? Right? Because it's a lot for them to think like, I've got to tell everybody I know, and then they tell nobody. But hey, can you think of one person who wants to know about it? So really trying to get that, that reach far and wide. Any other questions regarding the format? Councilmember Funk.
I would just add in terms of the, the promotion, but I'd encourage everybody, if you find out about it or you attend one, share a social media post if that's how you found it. Pass that email that I sent you or somebody else sent you on, you know, to somebody else and encourage them to attend. This is a really great and non intimidating way to participate if you've never been part of something at the council before. And it can be kind of intimidating to stand up there at the microphone in that big room in front of all of us on the dais. And, and, you know, and you, and watch the three minute timer, you know, tick down as you talk. Or even participate here online that way. But these will be much, you know, much more collaborative sessions. You won't feel as visible. You don't have to prepare anything advanced. Just come and listen and give your comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Funk. Let's move on. Yes.
Just real briefly, because Terry's texting me wildly to make sure I tell everybody. She's promoting outreach meetings with A-Town Daily News via digital ads targeting Atascadero residents with Charter Platform. And we're boosting Facebook and Instagram posts and social media, digital ads. So she has a litany of stuff here, but if you haven't heard about it yet, you know, or you know, somebody who doesn't, please pass it on. Please don't assume they know. We want that participation.
Absolutely. So let's move on to, I think the, the format we're all feeling comfortable with and, you know, providing extra information for those who want it. And let's now look at the, the specific outreach and the questions. So these are, what we wanted to do was get sort of this, again, you know, broadly, what are the priorities? Not narrowing down into, you know, I want this pothole fixed or something to that nature. But with this, these types of questions to kind of stimulate the conversation. Any input with regards to these ideas here? Councilmember Funk.
I just as a process point, I would encourage you to give the facilitators some time parameters for each question. So that, I mean, you could talk a long time on questions one and two and never get to the others. The bulk of the time is probably going to come in the first three questions. They maybe will get some input from people on four and five, but it may not. Those are a little harder for the average person to to say something more comprehensive on. So those will tend to be shorter comments.
Any other comments or questions with regards to these? I'll say, I, I think you've done a really nice job of encapsulating these questions like here's, here's really what we want to know. I think it will really elicit the type of feedback that we're looking for. And I agree with Councilmember Funk. I think those last two will be shorter questions. And it will really be something that city staff with your expertise will be able to say, okay, here's how we can measure it. You bring that back at a public meeting where council and all of the public can say, yeah, that's exactly what we want, or well, no, we don't think that measures it right. So there will be more opportunities even beyond these remaining nine meetings to, to kind of comb that in. So. Yeah, it will be good there. Any, I'm looking, so I'm not seeing any other council questions. So I think I would say if I kind of, can I get a thumbs up from my council? Do we have a consensus? This isn't a vote or anything, but we were looking good here with regards to the outreach proposed. Okay. Very well done. I know for both Jerry and Rochelle and really all of our staff, this has been a big effort. A lot of work that's gone into this and we appreciate you all very much for pulling something together to, and Terry, all of you to get the most input possible and to make this a really robust discussion with our, with our residents. We're looking forward to it. Thank you. All right, now we can move on to our discussion item, which is just a discussion of COVID nineteen. And we put this on sort of back when the pandemic started, just if there was information that we needed to share amongst the council or questions that we had or questions that the public wanted to ask. And so I would ask our city manager to pop on and let us know if there's any particular update that you wanted to provide.
I just want to make sure that everybody knows, I think the big question these days is when can I get the vaccine? Where can I get the vaccine? We are still in the state's level phase one A. So the state and the feds have set up tiers for who will get the vaccine first. And we're in one A, but we're starting to get close to wrapping that up and we'll be moving to one B. At this time, it looks like we'll get to one phase one B in February. Phase one B will include individuals seventy five and older and those at risk of exposure at work in the following sectors. Education, childcare, emergency services, food and agriculture. And then the next tier of one B will then include individuals from sixty five to seventy four years of age. Those of risk at exposure at work in transportation logistics, industrial, commercial, residential and sheltering facilities, critical manufacturing and congregate settings with outbreak risks such as incarcerated and homeless. And then the last one is phase one C, individuals fifty to sixty four years of age. This is the last, last one in phase one, which is all that's out right now. People sixteen to forty nine years of age that have an underlying health condition, which increases their risk of severe COVID. And those that of exposure at work in the following sectors, water and wastewater, defense, energy, chemical and hazardous materials, communications and IT, financial services and government operations and that community based essential functions. So these are on the state website. They are on the county website. They are available. We are working. Our chief Bryson has been working with the county task force to increase the output of vaccines that we can do. They're working very diligently. I think they're trying to get something up and going next week. Or at least have a plan. We are still dependent on getting those vaccines through the state and other you know, methods, but we want to make sure that we are completely ready to, to get those out. There will be a signup procedure and other things. Casey, is there anything else that we can share on that?
I think you covered it very well. The local county incident management team made up with fire service personnel throughout the county is working on this plan to get the vaccination out to the public. They're called PPODs, Public Point of Distribution. And we're going to be, have the plan up and running and ready to go by January eighteenth, next Monday at as many as three sites. One in North County, one Central and one South County. So if we have vaccine delivered by, by Monday, we will be up and running. So the plan's being presented to county this week and we should be up and running, ready to give it out as quickly as possible.
The ultimate goal, I believe, is to be doing three thousand a day, which would be quite a, quite a significant number. Currently in the situation report we had for, as of this morning, a little over fifty two hundred have been given out by the county health department, but that does not include the number that's been given out, say by hospitals to their staff and in congregate care. So there's another number that is probably actually bigger than that fifty two hundred that has already been delivered. Any council questions? Councilmember Funk.
And just in terms of the continued spread of the virus, I noticed that, that we, we had a stretch where we were getting very small numbers and then really huge numbers. Today's cases were four hundred and ninety eight new cases. Do we know if now if the, that shift in the numbers was a state database issue or something? Can you clarify whether or not we're getting reasonable kind of day to day numbers out now? Or are we still getting backlog that they're working on?
It is my understanding, there's a little bit of backlog, but the mass majority are day to day. I have not verified that. I'm still, we get our briefings on Wednesday nights, so I will know more tomorrow night.
Yeah, unfortunately, we both get our briefings Wednesday, so it's like six days.
Yes.
I asked to have a move to Tuesdays, but that's the board of supervisors and they take priority. So, okay. Last Wednesday, there still had been a bit of that backlog and, and Dr. Bornstein was recommending to not look at it day to day so much as sort of, you know, overall trends, but we're, hopefully they're getting close to having that fixed.
The overall trend is still really, really going up, even if it's not even evenly one day to the next. It's still, we're, for, over fourteen thousand cases now and a hundred and fifteen deaths. Which is sobering. I, the county is, is the county continuing to emphasize wearing masks when you are out in public? And washing your hands and keeping your distance and all those things that we are just really sick of doing by now?
Absolutely, positively. Those are being very, very strongly encouraged. Along with, you know, just being safe when you're out there in public. Honestly, here at the city, we're trying to encourage everybody to support our businesses in a safe manner. They are not supposed to be having onsite dining or especially not indoor dining. Please support them in that and order takeout. Make it easy for them to help not spread the disease too.
And just for folks who might want to know, we are at, currently at sixty one percent of ICU bed availability in our county. It's interesting that our whole region of Southern California is zero point zero. So like our beds, our number of beds are that small in comparison to the whole that is zero point zero. Interesting. But anyway, we are at sixty one percent. And as you all know, we had put forth a really concerted effort with the mayors, the board of supervisors, all of the public health officers, all of our state officials, I mean, really a full blown effort with our three counties, Ventura, Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo to become our own central coast region. And unfortunately, it's, it's been mostly crickets from the governor's office. So it's, we're disappointed, but maybe not. I'm a little surprised. I was, I was hopeful that with this, this effort of banding together that we'd have, we'd have a better chance, but so far nothing. Councilmember Dara, you, you're risking speaking now.
Yes, I am. No, a question I have, hopefully a simple one, for individuals whose numbers, so to speak, is up to get the vaccine. Where would these people go? Is this information on our website or the county website? Is there more than one location? And how can, how can we know that?
They, we don't have that information available yet. I am imagining that it will be a very similar process to some of the testing sites and some of that on registering with the county. We will have links on our website. There will be press releases. We will make sure that, that people know. So we'll, we'll boost whatever the county is doing and get that out.
All right, thank you.
And I see no other questions. I will go ahead and open up to public comment.
And seeing no other questions, I will go ahead and open up to public comment. Uh, I am seeing one caller, uh, Lorelei, uh, Kappel would like to speak. The floor is yours. You are muted right now. Uh, Lorelei, you are muted. So if you're trying to speak, we cannot hear you. Still not hearing you. I see that you're unmuted, but I'm not hearing you. Okay, hand is down, possibly. That was a mistake then. Um, any other members of the public and Luke, I'll ask, is there anyone on the phone that's wishing to speak on this item?
We do not have anyone on the phone.
Okay, uh, well, we'll go ahead and, uh, close public comments and, um, oh, actually, before I do that, Laura, were there any public comments to be read into the record on the side?
There were not.
Okay, uh, so we'll close public comments and we will move on to council announcements and committee reports. And I will just kind of go across on my screen here. It's the first of the year, so we probably haven't had a lot of meetings or things going on so far. But, um, I will start with Councilmember Borbo.
Uh, this, on Thursday, I have an IWA meeting. Um, and also earlier that day, uh, League of Cities Revenue and Taxation Committee meeting.
I, Councilmember Funk.
The, uh, Homeless Services Oversight Council Executive Committee, um, met this afternoon. Um, and the full council will be meeting on Wednesday, the 20th, um, on, on Zoom. Um, and discussing not only the very, and looking at, uh, decisions on grants for another round of the COVID-related, uh, grant funding. Uh, that's going to be heavily directed at trying to keep people from becoming homeless as a result of, of COVID. Um, and then, um, and also, um, a significant report on alternatives to encampments. We saw pictures of encampments in the video of the city today, um, and it's a problem throughout the county. Uh, and so those, a set of, a concrete set of ideas of what, what cities in the county might do are coming forward. Uh, groundwater, Atascadero Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency, that's a mouthful. Um, uh, the January session of that, uh, will be meeting in February instead. And Design Review Committee is, uh, scheduling a meeting coming up, um, soon. They will probably announce at the next council meeting.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Derris.
Unmuted. Okay, no, I've got coming up next Tuesday is the, um, Air Pollution Control District, um, Orientation Meeting for myself. I'll get to know everybody that's, um, involved with that and get up to speed on what I'm looking forward to that. Other than that, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Newsom.
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Uh, I had a Slocog and RTA meeting last week. Nothing of great significance right now. Uh, they're, out of the second stimulus, um, we discovered that some of the help for transit really isn't going to help the smaller agencies like, like ours here. Uh, but what we do have is there are some surface transportation funds of about 10 billion. So our, our region could get anywhere from maybe one to five million is the estimate, and that can be for roads, bridges, pathways. So, uh, looking forward to what that might be. Uh, Caltrans is doing a US 101 business plan. And so this is across five counties along the central coast. So looking at how do we make the, you know, how do we look at our assets and what the potential is here so that when funding becomes, comes available at state or federal level, that we are competitive for that? Uh, let's see. Uh, EVC is, as probably most of you have, uh, read about and heard about, uh, has merged with Reach, uh, the, kind of the two economic development organizations within a county. And so while they're, they're still going through this, uh, the EVC will continue to have its meetings. Uh, I believe it's through March and then, uh, things will start to, to fold together. And there will still be a component of public entities that participate. Uh, in one of their, they're going to actually have several, um, different, you know, groups that contribute in some way. And so still, uh, waiting to see how that plays out, what that looks like, uh, moving forward. But EVC still does have some initiatives like the childcare initiative, things like that, that's working on that will, uh, come under that umbrella of Reach and, you know, Reach, what they've said is they have every intention of continuing with those. Uh, I do have a city selection, uh, committee meeting next, no, the end of the last Friday of the month, where we will be selecting a replacement for, uh, Councilmember Fonzie, uh, who was on LAFCA, the Local Area Formation Corporation. And that is it for me. So with that, I will move on and ask if there are any, uh, individual determinations or actions. Councilmember Borbo.
Uh, yeah, actually, it's a question for the city clerk that all of us might be interested in, and that is, um, can you, Laura, can you advise us how many people have applied for, uh, the, um, At-Large Planning Commission appointments that the council will be, uh, holding interviews for in a while? And/or the C-Stock appointments?
Sure. I currently have four applications for the At-Large Planning, and we have two applications for the At-Large C-Stock.
And Laura, along that line, could you let the public know when the deadline is to turn in applications?
The deadline for applications is tomorrow by 5:00 PM.
Okay, and so they can go to the website or they can call or email you to find out how to apply?
Yeah, applications are available on the website under latest news or on the webpage for C-Stock and for Planning Commission are links to the applications.
And then to members of the public, if you have any challenge finding those, you can reach Laura, our city clerk, at cityclerk@atascaero.org for email. Uh, and 805-470-3400 for the city manager's office. Uh, thank you for asking that, uh, Councilmember Borbo. Any other individual determinations or actions? Any from staff? All right, seeing none, meeting adjourned to the successor agency. So we will now call to order, uh, the, uh, city council meeting in the capacity of the successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency of Atascadero. Uh, roll call, please.
Okay, Councilmember Borbo.
Here.
Councilmember Derris. Councilmember Funk.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Newsom.
Here.
Mayor Moreno.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
Uh, we have a motion by Councilmember Borbo, a second by Councilmember Funk. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borbo.
Yes.
Councilmember Funk.
Yes.
Councilmember Derris.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to the consent calendar, is there any member of the council that would like to pull an item, the item from the consent calendar? Uh, seeing none, is there any member of the public that would like to pull or comment on an item in the consent calendar? I will ask our city clerk if we received any emails.
We have not.
Thank you. We will close up. Uh, we'll not close, that's not a public comment, excuse me. Uh, we'll come back and, uh, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll move.
A second.
Motion by Councilmember Funk, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Newsom. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk.
Yes.
Count, Mayor, sorry, Councilmember Borbo.
Yes.
Councilmember Derris.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, we are on to community forum, which is reserved for persons that want to address the board on any matter that is not on the agenda, but over which this board has jurisdiction. Uh, speakers are limited to three minutes. And, uh, please state your name for the record. With that, I will open up to public comment. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak at community forum? I am seeing nobody's hand raised. Luke, is there anyone on the line that would like to speak?
We do not have any callers.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Christensen, anyone who has, uh, via email made a comment?
No.
Thank you. Well, the community forum portion of the meeting is now closed. Uh, we will move on to our management report, which is the approval of the recognized obligation payment schedule 2122. Uh, and we will turn this over to Ms. Jerry Rangel, our Administrative Services Director.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. Um, we will, um, hop to the presentation real quick. Okay, do you have the presentation in front of you then? Excellent. Uh, so this is our annual approval of the required obligation payment schedule. So as most of you may recall, this comes to you every January for, um, approval before it goes to the countywide oversight board. This, um, goes to the county. It's due by the 15th of this month so that the county oversight board can have their meeting and approve it. And, um, before it goes to the finance committee or State Department of Finance on February 1st. This covers one year of obligations beginning July 1st, 2021 of this year through the following June 30th of 2022. The administrative budget is also included and it is for the same fiscal year. The required obligation payment schedule, or the ROCS 2122, um, in this period, we anticipate the use of, uh, redevelopment property tax trust fund request of $1,869,820. And that's for bond debt service, administrative allowance and bond compliance. As I said before, it will go to the Oversight Board, um, the Countywide Oversight Board on January 29th. And if approved, then it will be forwarded to the State Department of Finance. It must be certified by the county and approved by the Department of Finance before it gets funded for our, our payments to be made. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions by the council? Seeing none, we will go to the, open this up to public comment and see if there are any members of the public who have questions. Please feel free to raise your hand if you are here on the webinar. Uh, I will ask Luke if our one caller would like to speak.
There is no one wishing to speak.
All right, and seeing no hands raised, I will ask our city clerk if we have any, uh, email public comments on this item.
We do not.
Thank you. Uh, with that, we will go ahead and close public comment. And, uh, if I have any council comments or a motion.
I'll move approval of the 2021, for the 2122 ROCS.
Come on, a second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Borbo, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Newsom. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borbo.
Yes.
Councilmember Derris.
Yes.
Councilmember Funk.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any board announcements or reports? Uh, seeing none, we will adjourn our meeting to the Public Financing Authority. Uh, so I call the meeting of the Public Financing Authority to order. Roll call, please.
Board Member Borbo.
Here.
Board Member Derris.
Here.
Board Member Funk.
Yes.
Vice Chair Newsom.
Yes.
Chair Moreno.
Yes.
All present.
Thank you. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Newsom, a second by, uh, Councilmember Borbo. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Borbo.
Yes, yes.
Board Member Derris.
Yeah, yes.
Board Member Funk.
Yes.
Vice Chair Newsom.
Yes.
Chair Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, we're now on a community forum. This is reserved for persons wishing to speak to the Public Financing Authority on any matter, not on the agenda, and over which, uh, this authority has jurisdiction, uh, limited to three minutes. And with that, I will ask for anyone to raise their hand who would wish to speak on this item. Uh, and I would also ask Luke, is there anyone on the phone who has pressed star nine and would like to speak?
We have no one, no callers wishing to speak.
Okay, and I will ask, I see no hands raised. I will ask our city clerk if we have any email to be read into the record.
We do not.
Thank you. Uh, the community forum, uh, portion is now closed, uh, and we will move on to, board announcements and reports. This is in an odd spot, but okay, board announcements and reports. Uh, seeing none, we will move on to the consent calendar. Is there any board member that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will move to the public, see if there's anyone wishing to comment or pull an item from the consent calendar. I see no hands raised. I will ask both Luke and Laura. Did anyone watch General Hospital back in the eighties, Luke and Laura? I never put that together. I know it's Laura, but anyway, sorry, it's getting late for me. It's past my bedtime, so I'm thinking of these crazy things. Um, so I, Luke, if there's any hand raised and Laura, if we got any, any emails.
We did not.
Yeah, there are no callers.
Okay, so you know that, no hands raised. We'll, uh, bring this, uh, and ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Oh, second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Borbo, a second by Councilmember Funk. Roll call, please.
Board Member Borbo.
Yes.
Board Member Funk.
Yes.
Board Member Derris.
Yes.
Vice Chair Newsom.
Yes.
Chair Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting of the Public Financing Authority. And we will see you all in two weeks for our next city council meeting. Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night.
All right.